Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Community Development Transportation Committee meeting for January 27th, 2021. The purpose of this committee meeting is to have the City Council pass on information to the City Council and discussion initiatives that are listed on the published agenda. My ordinance and committee consists of the Mayor, members of the City Council, and the City Administrator. The ordinance mandates the City Administrator as chair of meetings. This is a public meeting but not a public hearing, therefore while the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public questions or questions during the committee meetings. Public encounters or questions are received at the regular City Council meetings held at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers or virtually on the second and fourth Monday of each month. The first item on the agenda for today is the approval of the minutes for the Community Development Transportation Committee meeting on November 18th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Judy is our second. Second by Councilmember Tyzer. Any questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous, thank you. Next item under Community Development, number two, update on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan Process. Ms. Dyer.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Let me share my screen and I'll get started. So this is an update. So this is an update on where we are currently with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan Process. We wanted to bring this to you to let you know what we've done so far and what the next steps will be. So we had, as you know, a kickoff meeting on March 9th, 2020. Actually, that was the last, one of the last Mayor and Council meetings in person. So, and then we've had some advisory committee meetings since then. We had one on May 19th, 2020, and also on October 22nd, 2020. Our next committee meeting is scheduled for this evening with the Advisory Committee. We've had, what they've done so far is the background and previous input. So we've looked at change and preserving and the urban scale. We've done some follow-up exercises. They looked at the sub-area review. We're looking at the housing needs and mixed use, fiscal and economic health. The future development map and discussion is going to be on this evening's agenda. The character area narrative purpose review and initial refinements review. A lot of these are on this evening's agenda to go over basically on what the exercises that have done and what's coming up. The first round of public engagement ran from July 9th through September 6th of 2020. This included a mapping exercise and a survey. We received around 640 survey responses and more than 2,700 hits on the mapping exercise. This is most we've ever had in all the years that I've been here doing the Comprehensive Plan. In November, we had three workshops for the small area master plans. The, these consisted of sessions from 12 to 1:00 PM and then also sessions from 6:00 to 7:30 PM with questions and answers related to the conceptual drawings that were done by the consultant team and then they received feedback during the noon sessions. The three areas that were chosen for the master plans were the Old Alabama Road and Holcomb Bridge Road area, the Holcomb Bridge Road and Georgia 400 Node area Northwest Quadrant, and Alpharetta Highway and Holcomb Bridge Road. This was Area 1, Area 2, and Area 3. Staff chose these during the process last year. The second round of public engagement ran in early December until the New Year to request feedback on the small area master plan drawings. And I just got the update yesterday from the consultants, so it's not in the PowerPoint, but what the feedback told us was they depicted the three area sub-plans that we had asked for. These features overall received 324 likes. What they did was they took a look at the individual plan by the majority of respondents. Several features included unanimous support, including ideas for public squares, reintroducing the grid system, scaling down development activity from key nodal points towards surrounding communities. There was also two survey format exercises as part of the public engagement. There was a policy exercise which received 35 comments. They all had broad support. The least supported policy still had 65% of people saying it should be retained outright. And even in that particular case, 20% of respondents supported even though it should be better refined. And then there were land use themes as part of this as well, which also received 32 comments. At this time, the consultant team has been reviewing the code and the policies related to the racial equity element that was recently approved by the Council last fall. A part of the team is also included as Urban 3. They have been conducting an economic and market analysis of existing properties in Roswell. This analysis will include market value of the tax base specifically on a per acre basis and where the highest values are throughout the city. The third round of public engagement currently at this moment is to be determined, however, we're probably looking at March of this year. Tonight, as I stated, we have our third Advisory Committee meeting. We're going to be discussing a lot of details, going over the comments we received from the second round of public engagement, and discussion of the map, which is a lot, a lot of information that will they'll be going over. We will also be hoping to receive the racial equity comment, comment section from the consultants sometime in February so that we can bring that forward and discuss that as well with the committee. So what we're looking at is a third round of public engagement, most likely in March with the draft document and the map. So our goal right now is to hit Planning Commission. Most likely it'll be May based on what happens with the third round of public comment, but it could very well be possibly in April. Depending on when we make it to Planning Commission, if it's April, then you will see this at your May meeting. If it's May Planning Commission, then we will, you will see this at your June meeting. Also in this as well, we have started the Capital Improvement Element, CIE, and the Short Term Work Program, which is the STWP. That went out Monday for all departments to give us their list of projects, which we have to do every year, and this year it will be tied in with the Comprehensive Plan. Once it's transmitted by Mayor and Council, as I stated, possibly most likely in June, throughout the summer, it'll be reviewed by the state with an approval, returned to the city hopefully sometime end of August into September timeframe. Could very well be beginning of August depending on how well and how fast the state reviews it. Our adoption by Mayor and Council must be by October 31st of 2021. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Jackie. Any questions from the Council? Cool. Appreciate it, Jackie. Is this just an update, correct?
Yes, this is just an update. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Moving on to transportation, item number three, consideration for the Mayor and/or City Administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement between Fulton County, Georgia and the City of Roswell, Georgia for the Big Creek Parkway Phase 1 project that includes acceptance of reimbursement funds, the associated water line. Mr. Del Ross.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. Give me one second. I hope everyone can see this. First item for transportation this morning, this is a standard agreement we have, very common for our large projects. This is 700, approximately $1,000 of Fulton County water line work that has already been embedded in our plans. We referenced this when we awarded the contract last month that was approved by you. Basically, there is approximately $700,000 that will be reimbursed to us based on some relocations and some upgrades in Fulton County infrastructure embedded in our project. There is no cost to the city. We recommend approval.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions from the Council?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the Council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Palermo, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, consideration of amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County for the Wilio Road Bridge replacement project. Mr. Del Ross.
Thank you, Gary. Second item this morning, this is a really exciting project that should be the, hopefully the last time you see this. This was a partnership we created with Cobb County, started about four years ago with an IGA that you approved. Cobb County has received bids on the bridge replacements, so we are asking your permission to modify the IGA. And this project will be starting construction in the next couple of months. There will be a closure of the bridge. We'll be advertising that through our communication resources. It will be approximately, most of the summer, probably starting around May and opening back up in around September, October. Just a picture of the existing facility that we are replacing. The best part about this project, not only are we getting to replace a, a structurally deficient bridge, we are connecting a very popular bike and ped facility in Roswell to a very popular bike and ped facility in Cobb County with a new trail that will be terminating at the parking lot along Wilio, is, which is the terminus of the boardwalk system, if you're familiar with that. We are not asking for additional funding at this point. We are asking, based on bid prices, approximately $1.1 million of the $1.39 million we have currently in the budget will be allocated towards paying 50% of the construction of this project per the IGA. That concludes this presentation.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions from the Council? And what is the pleasure of the Council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Judy, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thanks, Rob. Item number five, consideration of a resolution to accept grant funding from the Georgia Department of Transportation, an approval of an REBC landscaping grant, budget amendment, BA, number 22042200-02-08-02-21, in the amount of $20,176,000. Rob, can you tell us what REBC stands for and then go ahead and proceed?
Thank you, Gary. This is a GDOT grant that the Council approved as pursuing a last year roadside enhancement and beautification council. It's basically state funds that are able to be put towards landscaping plant material, sod, topsoil, mulch, and other associated labor for items located on state right-of-way. So we were able to receive $20,176 that will be put towards this project. This is simply the budget amendment to recognize those funds.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions from the Council? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Tyzer, is our second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Item number six, consideration of a blanket approval to perform right-of-way acquisition services and accept right-of-way options for the Old Roswell Road and Warsaw Road intersection improvement project in the amount that we received, $46,000. Mr. Del.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So this is a much-needed intersection improvement project. We initially bid this one out for construction in 2016, but we didn't have enough money, so it didn't move forward. So this project improves dysfunctional intersection of Old Roswell and Warsaw. And I'll, so here is a existing graphic of the intersection that shows you Holcomb Bridges to the left and to the bottom of the screen, and if you go towards the right or the top of the screen, you will get to, excuse me, you can get to Mansell Road. So as you can see, there is not enough turn lanes at this intersection. So here is the improvement that's being designed, and we need some right-of-way for this one. It adds the necessary turn lanes at the intersection. And here's a graphic of the parcels we are impacting. You see numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, and the fifth parcel is the Mimosa Elementary School along Warsaw Road. I'm sorry, along Old Roswell Road. So we, so the impact is to, to five parcels. The screen shows you the square footage of the easements, permanent and temporary, and the right-of-way we need. So we are requesting a blanket approval. This is, this has been our normal process and we have used it very successfully on several projects in the recent years. So if you approve this and it goes smooth, we can start construction this summer, and it should take about six months to complete. So the amount we are requesting approval for today on the right-of-way blanket agreement is 46,000, up to 46,000, and there is enough money available in the project fund. So if you approve this, it would go to a future council meeting for approval. Do you have any questions on this one?
Thanks, Mohammed. Any questions from the Council? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Hall, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Director Ralph, I just have a question. I noticed that the school, which is owned by Fulton County, is part of that. Are there any opportunities to work with Fulton County as we just recently approved the pedestrian crossing and the improvement at Roswell High School? Can we negotiate with them in any way to have them donate that in, as we're going to be potentially doing some improvements there at that facility?
So absolutely, that, that's a great idea, and since we have several projects that we are working on these days, we already put in a request into Fulton County for those conversations, so that would become part of the conversation when it happens. And, and if they agree, the amount spent would be a little bit less than shown.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spada has a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Item number seven, consideration of a November 2021 referendum for renewal in transportation special purpose local option sales tax, T-Splus. Mr. Del.
Thank you, Gary. So this is a big one, as you can imagine. So the Mayor needs some very specific guidance on this one from the Council for the all Fulton County Mayor's meeting on February 5th. And we'll get to that in a minute on the last screen, but I just want to give some background on this one. So currently, we have a T-Splus that's in year four. It went to referendum in November 2016. It was for five years, and it was three quarters of a penny sales tax. And back in 2016, 52.8% of the countywide voters said yes. And in Roswell, that number was a little bit more than the countywide numbers. So it has generated, the T-Splus 1 has generated about $59 million for Roswell so far, and if the current trends continue, we expect to generate about $79 to $84 million for Roswell. So here is a list of the Tier 1 projects, and I just want to quickly give you the, the progress we have made. So Big Creek Parkway Phase 1, you approved the construction contract recently. It should go to construction soon. Phase 2, we should, we should be doing procurement in the next 12 months to get a design build firm to do the remaining design and start construction. Ivan Nine and Oxbow, it started construction last year. Rucker Road is pretty much done. We are at 97, 98% progress on that one. Holcomb Bridge Interchange, so the city made a, city executed an IGA with GDOT to, for the rebuild of the Holcomb Bridge Interchange, and it will get done as part of the express lane project in the next few years. The old Holcomb Bridge Road Bridge, that actually became part of the Big Creek Parkway Phase 2 when you approved the realignment, so this becomes a part of the Phase 2 project, and will get done as part of that. The historic gateway enhancements, so a decision has not been made what to do with the T-Splus money in the project, and whatever the recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Committee that you recently established, if, if you, if you agree with the, with the recommendations of the committee in, in the future, you know, that's one option for these funds to be spent, and there is other options as well, and it'll get decided at an appropriate time in the future. So the T-Splus 1 also had Tier 2 and Tier 3 programs, but we didn't really spend any money because we didn't have anything left after encumbering for the project in Tier 1. But this was the list, and this Tier 2 and 3 list could become part of the T-Splus 2 if it moves forward. So, so just to give you some more background on this one, so the, what the county is seeking at this point for the renewal of the T-Splus, they are suggesting for it to be on the ballot for the November 2021, so they need cities' guidance. There's 14 cities in Fulton County except City of Atlanta, so they need, they need the guidance from the cities whether to put it on the ballot for November or not. So they are talking about some very specific options. I'll go into details on each of these options a little bit later. So the, one of the bigger questions would be whether the cities, they want transit included in the T-Splus or, or not. So the transit specifically means the bus rapid transit, the future bus rapid transit operation in the express lanes along 400, and there's a separate project in South Fulton. And those are the projects that are coming out of the Fulton County Transit Study, and Roswell approved a resolution in July 2018 supporting that transit option on Georgia 400 in, in Roswell. So if, if the, if, if, if the T-Splus renewal does not go to referendum in November 2021, the collections will cease in March 2022. So if the cities want an uninterrupted collection beyond March 2022, it must go to referendum in November 21 this year. So here is just another fact about the way it's written. So cities representing more than 60% of the total population of the Fulton County excluding Atlanta must agree for it to be placed on the ballot in November 21. And this screen just shows you the split of population between the North Fulton and the South Fulton. It doesn't have to be north or south. It could be just any combination of cities, as long as more than 60% of the population is represented and those cities are wanting to make it go forward, then it will go forward. So the scenario where a city does not participate, so the, the referendum, well, the item could still go to the referendum as long as more than cities representing more than 60% of the population support. So if the city did not participate in the public involvement and the IGA and don't submit a project list to Fulton County, tax would still be collected in that city if the referendum is approved, but the revenue does not come back to the cities who will not be participating in the, in the IGA. So the three scenarios that, that are the options that we gotta pick, the cities have to make a decision on which one to move forward with. So the option 3A is the three quarters of a penny for roads and, for, basically for roads and surface transportation projects, does not include transit. So this would be basically the option we currently have in T-Splus 1, three quarters of a penny for roads and surface transportation projects. So if this option is moved forward, the expected revenue is 500 million to be distributed among cities based on their population. And if this option is picked, you know, the next step would be to develop a project list. The next option, option 3B, is to keep the sales tax same at three quarters of a, of a penny, but include transit in that. And so that's option 3B, and if this option is, is picked, about 300 million would be distributed to cities for roads and surface transportation, and the other 200 million could go towards the, the transit options. So option 3C, so that's the option where they're suggesting to add a quarter of a penny and make it a full penny sales tax and include transit in that. So if this option is chosen by the cities, then the total revenue would be $700 million, and 500 of it would be, you know, for roads and surface transportation, and the 200 million would go towards the, go towards the transit. And if this option is picked, there is a legislative amendment that would be needed by the county, to be pursued by the county for the, for the change in the rate of the sales tax. So this slide is a little bit confusing. We are just showing it as we receive from the county, but basically what you need to know here is the, if the, so if the, the amount shown for transit, which is the 200 million, that's actually less, that, that is about half of what's actually needed for the transit projects, and it is expected that the remaining funds would come from, from the federal sources. And of course, you know, if there is local and regional money included in the requests for federal money, there is a higher chance for, for approval. So again, just to be very clear, the money that is, that could get collected with, with the local sales tax is about half of what's actually needed for the, for the transit projects. So I think here we're just talking about, so depending upon which option is chosen between 3A, B, and C, the Roswell's share for the roads and the surface transportation could be about 48 to 85 million dollars depending upon which option is, which option is chosen. So here is the very strict schedule established by the county to make it to the November referendum, if that's, that's the option chosen by most cities. So they want to have a project list adopted by June and IGA executed by July, and they have to submit it to the election superintendent by August 2, August 2nd for it to make the referendum date. So here are the very specific questions that we need. Well, really, so the Mayor would be attending the all Fulton County Mayor's meeting on February 5th, and these are the questions the county is expecting to hear back from each, each of the city. So the questions are, you know, whether Roswell wants a T-Splus 2 renewal, a T-Splus renewal, and if we do, whether we want it to be on the ballot for November 21 election, and whether we want transit piece to be included in that or not. And if the transit piece is included, do we want to continue the collection at three quarters of a penny or go up to a full penny? So this would be the last slide. Like I said, there is some time sensitivity here, the all Fulton County Mayor. This item, you know, this item could go for the Mayor and City Council approval on Monday, February 8th, but that would be after the Fulton County meeting. So really, today is the day we need some, some guidance on this one. And if, if we decide to move forward in this one, we are already working on a public involvement plan. We could share it with you at the February committee, if that's the direction we want to go to, and we hope to have an approved project list, you know, within, in, in time to meet the Fulton County schedule, sign the IGA, and in the end, when we know for sure it is going to, to the referendum in November, we could do a, you know, a widespread public involvement and public education before the actual vote. So that is all the slides I had. I can always go back to any of the slides to explain it a little bit better, but here are the questions we need guidance on.
Thanks, Mohammed. Councilmember Spada.
Thank you. Great. Well, my input, since we're looking for input today, my input will be, you know, go to the ballot and make it very clear and transparent. So the ballot will say, are you in support of this plot? Yes or no? If you vote yes, then the following screen will open and will say, okay, which of the two options do you want? And I'm saying two options here because if you look from the perspective of how much money the City of Roswell will receive, you know, 85 million or 48 million, and I think that if you add transit, it's fair that you need And I think that if you add transit, it's fair that you need more money for transit if you decide that transit is the way you wanna go. So for me, once you vote that you do want this plot, yes, then open option number three A and three C. And let the voters decide between three A and three C. And this will guarantee to the city of Roswell eighty to eighty five million dollars from the T S plot. So, so I would say that let the voters decide between with transit or no transit. And then if you add transit, you have to add more of the percentage. Because if not, we are risking losing whatever thirty five million dollars in revenue to much needed transportation projects. So that would be my input. And then my question will be, how many of the six projects of tier one approved in two thousand sixteen, how many have been completed up today, hundred percent? Thank you.
So I'll just go to the screen where I had the list of the current projects. So for talking, so Rucker Road is almost done, you know, ninety six, ninety seven percent. It should be done in the next few weeks. And I think I already stated the progress, so I really don't have anything new to add there. Anything specific councilmembers of Pada that I can answer on any specific project?
No, no, that's fine. So seems like we can almost handle the same completion of only one of the six projects four years later, right?
Yeah, and I actually can get a meeting with the all Public Works Transportation Departments just yesterday with the county on, on the topic. And we are actually in pretty good shape progress wise because we are still working on all the projects. We are still moving forward with all the projects. So this is, our progress is above average comparing to all the other cities in the Fulton County. So I, I think we made good progress.
I've got a couple of comments. One is, as it relates to councilmembers of Pada's question about completion of projects. And thank you Mohammed, I appreciate the update that we are doing better than average. I would like to refresh everyone's memory that we chose very large projects. Some other of our sister cities chose smaller projects and their citizens have seen completion. We chose very large projects. And I would like to caution all the elected officials that no matter which option we choose, A, B, or C, no one has seen a shovel in the ground, no one has seen a bulldozer moving dirt. And so we are going to get a lot of questions as to where did our T S plus one money go? Because we did choose very large projects with an extended timeframe. The other thing that councilmembers of Pada mentioned, and perhaps Mohammed or Bob, you could weigh in on this, but the suggestion that councilmember Zapata had about moving forward and the questions on the ballot, I do not believe any of that is allowed by legislation. So Mohammed or Bob, could you walk us through the process for the referendum? How it looks on the ballot, what latitude we have on that?
So I'd say that is yet to be decided, but I'm not sure if, if a ballot could include, you know, so many different options. We just have to suggest this to, suggest this idea to Fulton County and see what, what answer we could, we could get from them.
My understanding is that currently the legislation in place would only allow a yes or no vote about continuing T S plus. And the allocation is worked out between the cities and the county and then approved by the legislature.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna ask that question. I've never had a, a vote where you say yes or no and it pops up to another one. So I, while that would be awesome, I, I don't know Fulton County is gonna be allow us to do that. Cause I think ultimately this is their, their, they get their feedback from us and we end up putting, they end up putting on the ballot, but we'll see. So my question is, is transit. You know, I, I don't think there's been a firm decision on what transit looks like at this point in time from Fulton County or how much money we might get from the federal government, et cetera. So I think that when it comes to adding transit outside of the projects, the city would be doing, might be tough right now unless explained further by, by Fulton County. And or I know it says on, in the slide B R T, but I don't think we've had a firm commitment on any of that. If so, and, and I'm wrong, please correct me. But that's where my issue is right now with including transit in this before we get to get any answers.
So when we, the transit, you know, based on the Fulton County Transit Study that was conducted and completed a couple of years ago and the resolution the city of Roswell approved to show support for transit, we are basically talking about B R T in the future, express be built by G dot. And a separate B R T projects for South Fulton. For North Fulton, it is B R T that we are talking about.
So have we been confirmed a B R T stop at Hoken Bridge then?
Yes, so remember as part of the rebuild of the interchange, that interchange accommodates a future B R T station. It doesn't build it, but it accommodates a future construction of a B R T station at the.
So we would have to build it?
No, this would be the, so the, e- even if the vote is approved, including transit, the cities, they do not get the transit piece of the money. They only get what they get for the road and surface transportation. The transit money stays with the county and gets to Marta or A T L, whoever is gonna build the four different stations in the corridor and to make the buses operational. That's, that's, that's Marta and Fulton County, not the city.
I, I guess what I'm asking is, is have they told us that we are getting it and timeline of when we might get it? Or we might be two more T S plus before that happens?
So if, if this referendum goes as, as planned and there is two hundred million dollars for transit, like I said, that's a little less than half of the money that's needed. But that gives the opportunity for the county to go to the feds and tell them, hey, here is the local and regional contribution towards B R T. So we are looking for the remaining funding. So the remaining funding is expected to come from the, from the federal sources. And whenever enough money is available, they'll, they'll start the construction of the stations and make the system operational. So I, I, but you could say that for, this is the first step towards making the transit, you know, a, a reality.
Thank you, just a couple of questions. So the existing T S plus that's expiring, was there any transportation involved in that one? And also I, I've heard that Cobb County has nice program. I don't know if it's a T S plus program or some kind of ongoing program. Can you talk about that and does theirs include transportation?
Yeah, so I, I assume you mean transit?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
The Fulton County T S plus one that we currently have, there was no transit piece in there. It was all roads and surface transportation. And Cobb County and Gwinnett County, actually, they've had transportation splas for many terms now. And I'm actually not hundred percent sure if theirs include a transit piece or not. Let me see if Rob knows anything on that. Okay, so for Cobb County, Rob tells me that theirs is not necessarily a, a transportation splas. Theirs is just a splas that covers transportation, public safety and a couple more items. So they, their options are more wide spreads or several different things that the county can do.
And Gwinnett?
Yeah, Gwinnett is same as Cobb County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. So basically, comment, comment I, I'd give is certainly I understand it's, it's ultimately Fulton County's decision and they'll ultimately decide the exact details. But to Councilman Zapata's point and Councilman Judy's point, I, I agree. I have not seen a ballot that says, you know, a yes or no, and then something separate pops up the way it is. However, I feel to, there, there are different ways that we could be empowering the Roswell voters just with our suggestion, you know, and, and what, and our feedback. Cause basically another way to do it could always just potentially be, you know, do you support this, this point seven five percent for the, for the transportation updates? And then a separate question being if, if that question passes or something along those lines, do you support a, a, a quarter percent for, for B R T or something along those lines? And just, just I feel there's different ways where instead of, instead of, you know, any municipality or county deciding what the right question for, for, for voters being, instead just really letting the voters decide and giving them the flexibility between those two. So, so just wanna raise that. I mean, I do know that this council, except for Councilmember Hall, all unanimously supported the resolution back in twenty eighteen that Mohammed had mentioned. I know a key aspect of it was that it was stressing, making sure that, that Roswell would have really control and impact on the exact location and some aspects like that. But, but, but I just wanted to kinda raise those, those different ideas.
So I, I would wanna clarify, Councilmember Polar Mode, that the county, you know, they're only leading the process. They do not make the final call. They are waiting to hear from all fourteen cities. And if, if the cities representing more than sixty, sixty, six zero percent of the population, they are for it, then it would make it to the referendum, otherwise it will not. So the county is really not deciding. They are dependent on the cities to just give them the input.
Thank you for the clarification. But so, so nonetheless, I think I definitely prefer input that, that gives voters more, really more control. And, and I think, I think there's some different ways to do that, but again, thank you for that clarification.
Let me interject here. What Fulton County is looking for on the fifth is for us to suggest one of those three alternatives. They're not asking us to go to the voters and do a straw poll. What they wanna know on February fifth is what does the city support moving forward with? Is it a continuation of the point seven five? Is it a continuation of that plus transit? Is it that plus the bumping it up to the penny? That they're going to put it on the referendum or they're gonna put it on the ballot based on what we come back with. So I will tell you what some of our sister cities have decided. It's my understanding Johns Creek is in flux. They had a meeting on Monday. Sandy Springs and Alpharetta are suggesting we move forward with the point seven five no transit. And the sister cities in the south are suggesting the point seven five without transit. So what Fulton County is looking for is what, what does that ballot look like? Are we willing to include transit? Are we willing to bump it up to a penny? Do we just wanna keep it status quo, which is what is current? So what I would suggest, and I, I love the idea of going to the voters, but what will be on the ballot is what Fulton County decides on February fifth. So my suggestion would be as, and also I would like to say that we would need extensive public outreach on this because it is a referendum ballot in November. The other thing that we have to be careful about, while, while we can educate, we cannot influence voters. So the city has to walk a fine line with the education versus influence. So I wanna, I want you all to keep that in mind. But right now, we don't have the luxury of going out to the public for a ballot in November on whether or not you want transit or you don't want transit. We can do a small poll or a straw poll between now and the next transit or the next T S plus ballot. So today is fairly simple.
Yes, um, thank you. And thank you Mohammed for great presentation and laying everything out very logically. I appreciate that. I think one of the things that is very important to me and I think to getting to the support of the Roswell community are the list of projects that are on our list, our local list. So just wondering what ideas might be out there for that that we might bring forward. Was also curious if the, like implementing the Bike Ped Master Plan might be included? Or just what some of the things are that we're looking at locally?
So, well, as of today, we do not have a list and the mayor is absolutely right. This is gonna take a substantial amount of public involvement initially to come up with a project list. And then when it is decided that it is going to for, for a vote in November, then a huge public education effort. So, and yes, we do have a lot of needs in the city, you know, Bike Ped Master Plan being one of them. And then all the programs, you know, the intersection improvement, improvement programs, the sidewalk programs, complete street programs. We have a lot of needs. But the, but the good thing and the positive thing that I see is that we will not have one big project like Big Creek in the T S plus two that would just take up like seventy five percent of the revenue. This time around, if it goes forward, we are gonna be able to spread the funds around the city do a lot more than the T S plus one, so.
Right, good.
One thing that we do have the opportunity to do, and Mohammed, I don't remember what the parameters of the T S plus one are as far as sidewalks, bike master, ped master plan. I do know that the city of Johns Creek is requesting that the T S plus two allow for stormwater issues. They don't have a stormwater utility and they would like to include stormwater projects with the T S plus two. So if, and Mohammed, correct me, if the Bike Ped Master Plan is not eligible in T S plus one, we can request that that be incorporated into the T S plus two. So we do have some latitude with the projects requesting them, not guaranteeing that, that they get on the T S plus two list.
Yeah, Mayor, that, that's a good question. And anything out of the Bike Ped Master Plan, it's all surface transportation and it's all included. We, we don't need any, any special permission or any change for that. But what city of Johns Creek is asking, you know, standalone stormwater projects, that is not eligible, that is not included. And for it to be included, it needs a legislative change. And it's only one of the fourteen cities asking for something that, that really doesn't belong in the transportation splas.
Thank you, Gary. I had the opportunity to watch on Fulton County TV a couple of weeks ago, the last meeting amongst the commissioners and mayors. And so it gave me a little bit of insight as to where we are. And I think I can help simplify this decision and this process following a couple of comments that Mayor Henry made. If you add up the cities who are already supportive of a November transportation continuation of the point seven five, let me say that again, a November continuation of the transportation point seven five, it is either at or very close to the sixty percent requirement. If we don't participate, if we don't agree today to do that, we get none of the money if it passes. That would be really bad for the businesses and residents of Roswell who have already told us that they want the Bike Ped Master Plan. They've already told us that transportation is one of the largest issues. is one of the largest issues we have. And so so my ask is that if if transportation on November at point seven five is where this is going, we should join in unequivocally. And then in the future, when the transit plan is more defined and you're we're able to describe it to it's able to be described to voters properly, then come back if that's the 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 decision that that the communities around us are interested in and talk about that. I think there are two separate decisions or just two separate types of voter requests. And right now, uh where the other cities are, uh we really don't want to have to uh to to pass by, I think, Mohammed, you said eighty six million dollars. Uh that's uh that's that's pretty darn significant if if we equivocate and 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 don't uh don't participate. So uh again, I think it's a very simple uh uh decision based on what's happened around us already. Um and so I'd I'd encourage I'd encourage everybody to to look at that. And if I've analyzed that correctly, this should be pretty simple.
Councilmember Plomo.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. So Mohammed, I just want to be clear. It's my understanding if a city says they do not want to participate and they don't enter that IGA and they don't give a suggestion or something along those lines, then they don't get access to the money even if the tax passes. But it's my understanding if if a diff if a city has a different suggestion, then they as long as they they're willing to enter it into it and they're they're saying they they want to opt in, they still would get access to the money even if their suggestion is not followed. Am I understanding that correctly, Mohammed?
Absolutely, Councilmember Plomo. Even if the if a city initially says no, they don't want to be a part of it, but then they see that things are moving in a different direction, uh they could still do their create their project list and be a part of the IGA and then still receive the money. So uh uh i- it's it's really and I just want to clearly state one more thing that Councilmember Kaiser touched on, that if the cities mutually agree to do a continuation of a transportation only uh uh SLOSS, there would still be an opportunity at a later time, next year, the following year, to do a quarter penny additional transit only uh uh SLOSS. So that would still be an option available to the county and the cities.
Okay, thank you, Mohammed. So thank you for clarifying that no matter which suggestion we do, as long as we're clear, we want to enter into it, we're going to give them project lists, then we would be then we'd be making sure Roswell residents take advantage of that. So that that's that's certainly important because if if you only get to take part, if you're if you have the exact same suggestion as the remaining sixty percent, then obviously, I just want to do the math and go with the remaining sixty percent. That being said, I think here's where there's just potentially a philosophical difference. And my my suggestion is that we we give we give Fulton County this suggestion that here's here's the way we we truly on the ballot, open this up to the residents, which is which is question number one. Do you support a seventy five uh a seventy five percent point, I'm sorry, point seven five percent aspect just for road and surface for typical cities' transportations? Yes or no? And then number two is if that passes, do you support a point two five percent for um for BRT or whatever whatever the language, whatever the language would be? And the reason I support doing that is because at the end of the day, I don't feel it should be any I don't feel we should make a decision when when there's an opportunity for residents to make the decision. If if all the other Fulton County ci- uh cities disagree, they say we only want one question, we want to go just with three A, and we're we're outnumbered, and Fulton County decides, you know, based on based on all the cities' votes, that's what they're doing, that's fine. And and our residents will have a choice to vote on whether or not they do want to have that tax and get that that transportation money for for road improvements, for bike and master plan, all these different aspects have been discussed. But at the end of the day, what I support doing is is giving residents that vote. And frankly, Mohammed, as you mentioned, there's always the chance in the future they could have a separate one for that point two five. Well, wouldn't it be helpful if Fulton County found out ahead of time where, you know, kind of the numbers were and where the residents stood on on whether or not they'd want that? So those are those are my views.
Yeah, and I think we can uh we we can request the county. Uh I'm not sure if, you know, the if if the language of the ballot could include like, you know, and and if what it could be, since we know transportation, surface transportation and transit, these are two independent things. There could always be you know, two different, two separate questions on the ballot, whether this or uh transportation's plus a separate one, whether they support, you know, a point two five additional penny for transit. We we'll just suggest that to the county and we will see what the right way to do this is.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, City Commissioner Palmer. So um yeah, I'm gonna go back to to my input. What in we are in twenty twenty one. We all use this very often, high technology. So not having the options to, after you say, yes, I agree on this plot, then will you want with or without transit? Not giving this choice to the voters who already taken the time of the day to do one of the most important civic rights, which is vote. So I don't understand. It's just because never done in the past, we cannot do in the future. Uh even if we have the technology available, software and hardware, I don't understand. Uh we have two Fulton County Commissioner representing Roswell. Uh not doing this and no having the desire to really, really let the voters decide with yes or no, and if it's yes, with or without transit, doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense at all. And if a piece of old legislation is prohibiting to do that, let's change it. Let's change, let modify. But let the people, let the voters decide with or without transit if they want to continue with the T-SLOSS. So I heard you all, and I heard your arguments, but really, uh I think that we can do better. And hopefully, we can let our commissioner know, and we can let other cities around us know how important is for Roswell and the voters in Roswell to decide yes or no with transit. So and if you ask this up and down, left and right in uh in Fulton County, I bet you that everybody would like to have the right to be able to choose at the voting machine on the ballot to do with or without transit. So again, I want to remind, we're in twenty twenty one with high tech, we invested millions of dollars at the state level with the new uh voting machines. So saying that now the technology is not there to open another screen after you say yes, to get you another option, and you really tailor to the desire of the voters, doesn't make sense. Uh I still, I heard the arguments, but doesn't make sense to me. And if a piece of legislation is stopping to do that, let's change the legislation at the county level. Uh so that is, I mean, I can't move from from this, you know, I can't move to not giving the choice to the voters to decide uh what I don't know. I I really don't know. And I hope that the commissioners of the Fulton County are listening to this meeting, and they're taking action to make it more tailored to the voters' desire.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Thank you, Gary. Um I'd remind my fellow council members that there isn't unlimited funds. This is point seven five. It's either used for transportation or it's used for a combination of the two. If you choose the two, the transportation piece goes down. This council has already moved to try and do the Bike Ped Master Plan. This is where, you know, a- as I understand it, that can be part of these funds. There are no other funds to do the Bike Ped Master Plan. And so if you are all serious about that, this is one place it can come from. If you take the eighty six million dollars and you divide it up amongst the two places, you have a lot less. In a few minutes, we're going to talk about a sidewalk plan. A sidewalk plan that right now will require between forty two and eighty six years to complete. If we're serious about a sidewalk plan, and if these sidewalks can be included, then we should move forward and do what the citizens have already asked us to do and not ask them again and again. They've already told us, here's the funding mechanism that can get that for them. And 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 that can be some of the projects that go on the project list. Otherwise, there's no funding for them, and we're just we're 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 just playing, you know, push push the idea around. This can give the citizens of Roswell what the citizens of Roswell have already asked us for, we've already voted for. So I would encourage us to take a look at that because at this point, sitting right in front of us is the means to get things done. Thank you.
Councilmember Jerry.
So I'm a bit confused. I I didn't hear anybody here argue that if it was possible, the vote should hand be handled that way. I I I think that we are, as a whole, want to give as many decisions to the voters. So that should not be directed at this body, um because I don't think that was any way, shape or form an argument anybody said. Um what was said is there might be reasons why you cannot, based upon different legislation. And if there is, I don't think that's city legislation to change. That's going to be different legislation that we do not have control of. So we can definitely check that. And I think that that's something that should be done, but don't lay that at the feet of this body, because that's not, I don't think anybody here is in opposition to that, um A. B, um the mayor asked a question to put this on the ballot. I'm having issues with not knowing the definite plans of BRT at Holcomb Bridge. For the citizens of Roswell, I would love to say, hey, look, let's include transit on this if we're going to get BRT at Holcomb Bridge, not just maybe we're gonna get BRT at Holcomb Bridge, and it's up to Fulton County and MARTA once we do that. So so if that's the case, of course, hey, look, I'm all for the transit portion as well. Right now, three A and three B, I believe it was, I can't remember, uh the 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 one, the point seven five width and the point seven five without. Uh I could go either way on that, depending on, but I I think it's important that we know within a time period that we're not going to get to a different T-SLOSS vote five years later and still have no train we're paying we're paying into transit when that money could go to surface. So that's my problem with this is I I can do either. I just don't know enough about the transit plans to say let's throw that amount of money into transit, which might not happen for another five years when we go to T-SLOSS to another T-SLOSS vote. So for me, Mayor, I'm I'm uh for uh the T-SLOSS right now. Um I think it's been a a a great addition. As you said, we've got big projects that uh both shortly have shovels in the ground and um moving the city forward. So that that's my only problem, Mohammed. And I know you tried to answer that question. I know you probably don't have a firm answer on that, and that's what I'm struggling with. And what you said earlier about delaying that point two or delaying the transit vote until they do know and that's an opportunity, then I can support that. I just want to make sure that there will be that opportunity. If Roswell just comes and says, hey, look, we want it and other cities don't, are we gonna still get a chance to look at that transit referendum in the future outside of this T-SLOSS vote? So you wanted an answer for me, that's where I am. So I could go with either, uh depending on what the rest of the council says. But I I do think it's important. We made a decision to redo Holcomb Bridge, redo Big Creek Parkway, South Bridge, everything in in unison in hopes to have that BRT to cut down on traffic and ease of transportation at Holcomb Bridge. So that's a big part of my decision move forward.
So I I just want to comment on one thing here that for the transit piece, uh we're talking about two very specific project. Project number one is BRT, operational BRT along four hundred in four stations, including Holcomb Bridge. And the second project is in South Fulton. So when we say transit, that is the two exact projects we are talking about. Nobody's going to be able to guarantee if the local vote passes with a transit, uh nobody can guarantee the implementation timeline, because remember, this is still only going to generate less than half the money that is needed. With this money in hand, or, you know, with the revenue started to collect after November, the the locals, the region, the Fulton County can go to the feds and tell them that here here is the local commitment. We need the rest to make it operational. Now, when we get the federal money and when it gets implemented, it's going to be almost impossible for anyone to answer that question. But we can always ask the county.
So, okay, um I'd like to kind of funnel the conversation back in. We've got three options. The first one is three A, that's a point seven five percent with no transit. Five hundred million is distributed to the cities based on population. Three B, point seven five percent T-SLOSS with transit. Two hundred million goes to transit. Three hundred million is distributed to cities by population. And then we've got three C, that's one percent T-SLOSS with transit. Two hundred million for transit, five hundred million distributed to cities by population. So first, let me ask you all, are you willing to suggest that we up the point seven five to one percent to include transit? Are you willing to do that? Or are we looking between the options three A and three B? Are you willing to give up two hundred million of one point seven five for transit? Those are those are the questions. So could you help me? Is anyone interested in raising uh T-SLOSS to point one percent? Or one percent? Sorry, one percent. Yeah.
Councilmember Plomo.
So I'd say I am opposed to three B. And the reason being, uh Councilman Kaiser described the discussion that we've been having about the two separate votes, that it would take away money from what the city gets, in which case, popular projects like Bike Mess Ped Master Plan and other improvements would be less, you know, uh possible to be completely finished. So I, for me, three B is out of it, and I feel the voters should be voting on the amount that would come to the city is point seven five. That being said, Councilman Judy said a lot of things that I actually feel I agree with. And 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 my point and position is, I feel right now, we're having a debate on what Fulton County will allow, what Fulton Fulton County has capabilities for with legislation, with ballots and all that. And I don't want to make assumptions, and I don't want to I don't want to vote based on on those assumptions. What I want to do is I want to vote on the on on giving our intent to Fulton County. And my personal intent is different than their pure A, B, or C. Because for me, the intent that I want to show to them is that yes, I want to give voters the choice to be uh to support T-SLOSS, and I want to make sure we come up with that project list. So that's 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 an easy, easy part of it. I I think all seven of us probably agree on that. Number two uh is where I think we might disagree. I don't want to just say three A. I certainly don't want to just say three C. What I want to let Fulton County know that I want to do is I want them to I want them to ask not one question but two. And I want them to separate it on this single ballot, because as Mohammed mentioned, he feels it's pretty clear. I do agree with Councilman Judy that if we're going to include that possibility for that extra point two five, there needs to be more clarification and more um just really illustration of exactly what that second question would be asking. But I think I think on the ballot, if Fulton County has the ability, if it's legal, et cetera, then question one, do you support point seven five percent, which would go to the cities and here's the Roswell public uh list? Question number two, do you support an additional on top of that point, separate and on top of that point seven five? Do you support a point two five percent? And at the end of the day, my reasoning being, anytime we can give voters the choice, I feel we should be we should be having giving them the control. And I feel this is a way that we do that, instead of us deciding that we don't want them to be able to vote on this or against this.
My question here is, um and I am more than happy to lobby to suggest um that Fulton County allow that. I'm more than happy to represent that in the meeting. If Fulton County says no, are you saying, okay, well, then we're out of it? Is that is that your intention? So what's plan B? What is plan B?
My, my plan B is they know that we're in, they know that we want to, they know that we gave them the point seven five option and the point two five. At that point, at that point, we can see if other, if other cities have said the same thing, if they haven't. If the most cities have just said, nope, we don't want to give the option for that extra point two five, all the others just said the point seven five. Then I think they know and see that that aligns with, hey, we did also support a question about that point seven five.
Thank you. So, you know, first point, the city of Roswell voters need to participate. On this, um, decision to sub this plot. That is my first point, I guess, was is going to Roswell participate, yes or not? Yes, Roswell should participate. That is my first. Second, um, I think we don't have, none of us have. Enough or or non-information regarding projects. Either for transportation or for transit today, right now in front of us. We don't have any list of projects, uh, which is fine, I understand. So what, but this led me to say, look, how are we going to make a decision today? You know, not only, which is fun, I'm going to participate, yes or no? Yes, I say, yes, we need to participate. But then option three A, three B and three C, how can we choose one of these three options? With non-list of projects, either transportation or transit. And I, and I echo Councilmember Judy when she said, look, how can we decide on transit if we don't see anything? That is going to happen here in Roswell right now. We don't have any list. So it's very hard to vote with no, uh, basic, important information here. So if the mayor is looking for a vote to say, okay, it's going to Roswell participate, I will say, I will vote for yes, we need to participate. Then which option, well, I already explained twice that I'm all for the technology to use. The options to give two options, with or without transit to the voters directly, uh, for them to decide. If after lobbying Fulton County and talking to other cities, uh, in the county. About how they feel to give the right to the voters to decide transit or not transit. Then we had to see, okay, well, the only option to participate is to choose one of the options. That's fine. When we get there, hopefully will be a more clear, or no more clear, will be a list of projects. For transportation and transit for us to decide, uh, with or without transit. So at this point, with this information given, my only vote for yes will be. To participate on the ballot, the residents of Roswell. If we had to choose A, uh, if we had to choose three A, three B or three C today. I would have to abstain because we don't have enough information on projects at this time. So I don't feel that it's responsible action from my side to vote on something that important. Without. Uh, critical information on the projects.
Councilmember Zapata, I would like to remind you that, um, two things. One is Marta does have a plan. The plan is B R T express lanes on, uh, four hundred with four stations. One of them being located in the city of Roswell. That is the plan. That's the north side plan. There's also a south side plan that this would be distributed evenly. So they do have a transit plan. It, you've seen it numerous times. Now, having said that, the city's transportation plan. We go to the public with extensive public input. The citizens of Roswell will give input onto those projects. Staff is already working and has a list of possible projects. That we can go to the citizens of Roswell and say, what, what is most important to you? And then we establish our project list by June of this year. So what you're saying is we don't have any information. Well, one of them is. You want things generated by the residents. Well, our project list in the city will be generated by the residents. The other thing is he said we don't have any transport or transit, uh, information. Well, we do. And it has been published and I've provided it to you on numerous occasions. So my third point is, are you following Councilmember Blair Mo? In that you would support, if they had two questions on the ballot, you would support three A. And if people wanted to support three C, so are you, are you? And that's my understanding from Councilmember Blair Mo. Um, so you want to ask the citizens, okay, do you support the transit, uh, portion of this? At an additional point two five. So those are, that's what we're dealing with here. And if you would like to abstain, that's fine. I need direction. They want an answer by February fifth. Um, um, which direction we want to go here in Roswell. I am more than happy to represent and lobby for the, um, the three A. And the additional question on the ballot, which would be the three C portion. So I'm more than happy to do that, but I need to know if you all are supportive of moving forward, period.
Thank you. Yeah, we all know about the transit around four hundred up and north, which touch one exit and a half of city of Roswell. So we know that which is Holcomb Bridge and Mansell the other half, because half is, Alfreda half is Roswell. So my point about transit, let me more clear, is about east, west and around the city of Roswell. You know, how are you going to move people around the city of Roswell and how are you going to move people in and out into the mega project along four hundred? So along four hundred, everybody knows, I mean, it's not even mentioned, it's not even worth to discuss that because everybody knows. But how is it going to be transit around the city of Roswell on our Holcomb Bridge corridor, in our half, you know, Mansell corridor? How are you going to be in Alfreda Highway? How is it going to be the transit, the, the full transit? I mean, just one north thousand four hundred, uh, doesn't resolve all the issues. If you believe that transit has to be improved in a, in Fulton County. So saying that, my position today is, and which was my first time when I said that. My first, uh, when I first raised my hand and said, look, my input is. I believe that the Rosse, residents of Roswell and voters should participate on the ballot about this decision. And then the next one is to include three A and three C on the ballot. So that is my position. Three A and three C should be included on the ballot for the voters to decide. If they think that we need to continue with the T S plot. So if any question, I'd be happy to answer.
Mohammed, you want to clarify some things?
Yes, thank you, Gary. I want to clarify a couple of things. So Councilmember Zapata. Uh, the Fulton County Transit Plan that, uh, the city council saw multiple times. And, uh, passed a resolution in twenty eighteen to support. That clearly showed this B R T idea for four hundred. That's the only thing we're talking about when we say transit in the conversation today and for this referendum. But the plan also had, you know, east, west, along Holcomb Bridge, highway ninety two, highway nine, those are future transit options. But that's not what we are talking about today or for the possible vote in November. Those are all separate, but they are part of the overall Fulton County Transit Plan. And one more thing I would clarify is that since the split of the population between North Fulton and South Fulton is. Two thirds North Fulton, one third South Fulton, the transit money will also be split, uh, amongst north and south accordingly. So whatever their transit revenue is, two thirds come to North Fulton based on population, only one third goes to, uh, South Fulton. And then on the possible project list, Councilmembers Zapata, so you know, you see a long list of unfunded items. As part of every budget, uh, exercise, uh, they, they stay unfunded. We have a bike ped master plan and as, as the tier two and tier three projects of, uh, T S plus. One, the current T S plus, we have programs in there, intersection improvements, a complete street, bike ped master plan. That's more than enough, a lot more actually than could ever be generated with the upcoming T S plus. So please do not worry about not having enough projects. Uh, and yes, we will work on a project list very extensively with the public. We will create it and let the public, uh, decide which ones, you know, get a lot of input. And then when things are moving forward before the vote, we will do an extensive public education as well, exactly like we did back in twenty sixteen.
Yes, thank you. I, I think for me, the, the real question is we just need to decide how serious we are about transit. And about supporting that. Um, I know we have said that we supported it earlier with a resolution. And when I look at these options, I think that given the economy, um, and projections going forward. I think it would be very difficult to take, um, option A. And then with the second question to add an additional point two five to, to the ballot and to get support. I could, if it's possible, I don't know if it is, to split that with a point five. And ask for the additional, uh, point two five for support for transit. That might be a way around it. But I, I don't see that splitting it with three A and then asking for an additional point two five makes a lot of sense in this, in this environment. I also, from what I understand, we need to show commitment at this point to transit in order to get anything started. Because if it's not supported, um, it, it, you know, we're just pushing it further, further, further and further out into the future. So I just, just want you to really, you know, think long and hard about that, you know, that our decisions day really impacts. What transit looks like here five to ten years from now and beyond.
So Councilmember Wilsey, are you proposing that we go with option three B? Which is two hundred million for transit and three hundred million distributed to cities by population?
I think that that is a good compromise if it would be possible or if there would be any interest in splitting that to a point five and point two five addition. Um, but again, I think that, you know, we as a body, as a city, need to decide our commitment to transit and, um, and, and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Um, here's, here's, here's kind of where I'm at, at this point, uh, taking into account what everyone has said. And looking at the needs, uh, that, that we've already put on our books. I can support three A. But I would, I am, uh, very interested in all the transit, uh, uh, projects that we've, we've talked about. And I feel like it's a separate decision. And if the citizens of Fulton County want to approve a, uh, point two percent. Uh, point two O, uh, uh, for, uh, you know, whatever it is, a twenty or thirty year timeframe. Which is the other option that the law allows. Uh, I think those are two separate questions. And so, uh, if, if I could, Mayor, what, what I'm talking about at this point to try and get everybody on board. Is, is, is a three, uh, a three D, if you will. Which is accept the, 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 the concept of three A, move forward with three A. And ask you to move forward with a separate, uh, initiative, uh, for the other, uh, uh, two tenths. You know, uh, either, either on November or on a subsequent ballot, whatever, uh, the rest of the cities decided, uh, decide on. I, 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 I don't want to lose the transit piece, but I don't want to confuse people by having both there. I think we ask them for three A, certainly in November. And then if you lobby to see, uh, wh- what and when we could do the other piece, I think that would be, uh, a, a, a good place to be. Thank you.
Confused, Councilmember Tyser, uh, so you're saying, um, are, are you? Okay, so are you supporting Palermo Zapata in that? Put two questions on the ballot if possible, supporting three A. Then the second question would be, do you support an additional point two five for transit? Are you agreeing with that or? Are you, and, and if we can't get two questions on the ballot, then drop back to three A, is that?
Not, not exactly, not exactly. Um, I'm, I'm saying three A definitely goes on the ballot, period, end of story. Okay? And whether three, whether, whether the, the, the separate point two O for whatever, twenty or thirty years. Goes on the November ballot as a separate question or on a subsequent ballot on a separate question. Uh, I think is a different issue, uh, and you, you, you and the mayors probably need to discuss with Fulton County. How that would work. Um, I'm concerned that if they both go on together. It won't pass and I also do not, I do not support the, the, uh, uh. The if then question. Uh, I think that, that doesn't exist in our laws. It won't exist in our laws. And I think you either ask the citizens to decide, uh, the way I've described, uh, or you just go with three A. So, you know, if I were to, if I were to be making a motion at this point, I would move to, uh. Uh, to, um, accept option three A. And to ask the mayor to lobby for a separate point two zero. Uh, uh, with, with the, uh, other officials, uh, to be either on the November or may, uh, or, or subsequent ballot. Uh, whatever, um, you know, made, made the most sense. That's what I, that's what I think I do. Because again, I think both are important, but they're, they're, they're very hard decisions to make as one. And I think that's what you're hearing from, from the rest of council. Thank you.
Okay, just clarification, you're saying, um, two zero, um, if what is being proposed? And three C is point two five additionally. Is, is that what you're referencing?
Uh, I'm actually referencing, uh, point two zero, but over a longer timeframe. I think that's, uh, one of the things that had been discussed at some of the prior meetings, uh, that, that Fulton County had. Um, to me, it, 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 it's either point zero over a longer period of time or two five over a shorter period of time. Whatever the, the law allows, I think there's a legal issue involved in, 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 in how long it can last. I think, uh, conceptually whichever one works, there's, I think, again, there's separate, separate issues. Uh, and they should be seen as separate issues.
Thank you and thank you, Councilmember Tyser. And I, I think I know, um, I, I follow where you're going, that the point two O or point two five is being discussed here. At some other communities have a long-running point two old version of this that they continuously put towards transit. And I think that's what you're suggesting and I would concur with that. I would support three A. But I do think the transit piece is a, is a bigger piece and needs to be, uh, addressed. It's very important and it needs to be looked at beyond just a single T S plus. It's an ongoing thing and perhaps if the mayor can bring that to Fulton County. They can, uh, model, uh, some kind of provision for the ballot to incorporate that as a long-term item.
Mayor, I, I'm a bit confused it, uh, it, on this new option. I'd like clarification on it, um, based upon your conversation earlier, um. About transit and the B R T. So everything considered, if we are getting the B R T. When the, when the, um, express lanes start to go in and the money's needed for the design of. That at Holcomb Bridge and we are one of the four stops, then I don't, then I think that changes discussion from. Three, whether it's three B or three C now, uh, because, you know, it's one of the two. Uh, because we unanimously passed a, a thing last year saying we wanted transit. So, so if that's the case and it's a three B, three C question for the voters. Do you want to at a point seven five or do you want it at, at one? And that's the question for the voters versus, uh, three A. Um, and you just throw three A out because we as a council, unless people are changing their minds now, unanimously agreed on transit. So for me, it's a question of three B, three C. Um, to let the voters decide whether they want a, you know, point two five increase, uh, during these times. Um, that's, that's where I am based upon your comments earlier, this three D that's come about. I just don't know if it's possible or we're, or you know, what, what it looks like moving forward or what it would even be talking about there. Um, so, um, that's where I am on it, Mayor. So I, I, based upon your comments earlier on now. So based upon your comments earlier on now, the voters should go 3B, 3C, and decide whether they want an increase, because we already, as a council, said, let's back transit.
Thank you. So I like the idea of Councilmember Tyser, because, you know, transportation and transit could go perfectly, you know, parallel, but in different pages. Because, you know, bundle things, I'm not agreeing, in a referendum, I totally don't agree on bundling different things just to get them passed. So people have to say, hey, I'm happy with D, but I'm not happy, but I have to vote because I like this. So I like the option, actually, of a 3D. And the 3D will be transit only, 0.25, or 20, 25, whatever is decided, whatever is needed. If it's needed to finish this 400 transit corridor, we needed .25 to be able to finance this, then 2.25 is, and if it's with 2.0, 0.20 is enough, then that's fine too, whatever is enough to finish this project. So, and this specific project. So I think that 3D makes total sense, having transit by itself, for the voters to decide. So you have another line, I mean, it's very simple, very simple, we've all been voted, so it's very simple. One line says, you know, do you want .75 T plus for traffic with half a million dollars? Yes, no, yes. Sorry, yeah, 500 million dollars. And then the other one, the other line, do you want transit? Yes, zero transit or .25 transit? Yes or no? That's fine. And that's it. And let them with two lines decide between transit and traffic. So I like the idea a lot of Councilmember Tyser of giving these two options to the voters. .75, which is 3A, happened to be 3A, and 3D, because they, Fulton County didn't present this option, 3D will be .25 for transit. Yes or no?
Thank you. Just to clarify something for Councilmember Judy. We need every penny that 3A produces for our transportation, based on the things that we've produced. We've also unanimously moved that we want the transit. And I think the problem is 3B doesn't give us both. And so that's why I see them as two separate, they're two separate decisions, they're two separate timeframes, as Councilmember Hall indicated. Now, whether you have them on the same ballot, or whether they're on separate ballots, really depends on, you know, who's ready and when they're ready to move these things forward. And so, you know, to answer the immediate question, that's why I think 3B needs to get on the ballot right away. And 3C, people need, the people in the know on these things really need to evaluate the when for that. But I'm, I, you know, I'd be very, very supportive of the transit piece, because I think long-term it's needed. But I want, what also is needed is the full amount of 3A to get our projects done. And that's really where I'm at, is we've got, we've got a whole long list of things that need to get done.
Thank you, Gary. Mr. Palmer, appreciate that. So Councilman Tyser, I'm sorry, Councilman Zapata, it's actually, so what you just described is what I was proposing actually in the beginning, and frankly, it's the one thing I'm going to vote for. The reason I do not support Councilman Tyser's Scenario D is because basically the, we're deciding that we don't want the voters to have the right to vote on the transit now. I feel if we're bringing this, we bring it together. Councilman Judy, I agree with a lot of your sentiment. The one area I disagree with, or two, is one, I agree with Councilman Tyser, and I think others, that we should be giving the full .75 option to the residents. And so that's why I do not support 3B. And the reason why I want to give the intent to Fulton County, again, based on the other cities outnumbering us, et cetera, we might not be successful in that, but the reason I want to share that intent is I don't want to make the 3C decision for the residents either. I don't want to say to the residents, either you vote for all the transportation and the BRT, or you get nothing. I want them to have two votes. Do you want .75, which is going to cover this whole list of transportation updates? Yes or no? And then number two, do you want .25 going towards BRT? And I think there'll be some people, probably many people, that will vote for that A portion, but not that next one. And at the same time, the reason I like it is, if we're going to do a ballot question anyways, I want it to be residents making the decision. I don't want us to decide it's not ready for them to vote on. I don't want to decide that maybe, you know, without definitive timelines, maybe there'll be a vote in the future. I want it just to have, let's have it all go on one single ballot, and then we can go from there. That's why I want to see something that has two questions that take the best from A, as well as a portion of C.
Sure, thank you.
Regarding the two questions, is it possible to get feedback from Fulton County on whether or not that is possible, to do a local option and a transit question? Not an if or, but just separate questions?
What I'm hearing, let me make a suggestion. Okay, so I'm hearing the suggestion that there are two questions on the ballot under single referendum. A and B, do you want the option A, and then do you want the additional .20 or .25 for transit? The, I don't know the answer to that. I can certainly suggest it. But the other option is that we support 3A, but we also request a separate referendum for the .20, 25 on the same ballot. So that would be my suggestion. So we definitely are in on 3A. We want, I can strongly suggest that the city of Roswell supports transit, and we would like to have a separate referendum on the ballot that just is in support of transit. I don't think that that would hurt any other city to do it that way, because if we did it that way, they, other cities would be able to gauge whether or not their citizens are supporting transit as well. So I can request it that way. And if I see heads nodding, so I'm hoping that we got to some kind of consensus if I present to the mayors and the Fulton County commissioners in that forum. That way, it does several things. One is it puts us in a position to say, yes, we're supporting moving forward, status quo on T plus one. But then also, we want our citizens to weigh in separately on whether or not they would support the transit. I think that that would be a great way for all of us to judge what our citizens are thinking, and it would also be a good way for Fulton County to understand how its citizens are thinking. So I think, to me, it's a win-win. So I am more than happy to fight for that.
I would support that option. I think that helps accomplish what all of us are speaking about here. So I would definitely support that. I mean, just to clarify, the ultimate decision is made, what is on the referendum is based on what the majority of the cities decide, correct?
Percent, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So moved.
Councilmember Judy, did you have a comment or question you want to bring up before the motion?
No, I just want to make sure that there's an option. I don't, what I didn't like about throwing 3B out, that everybody said was that we basically made a decision, and it just takes it out of it. We were basically making a decision that if you wanted transit, you're getting a .25 raise for the citizens, and I didn't like that. So, you know, now with this new form, the citizens will decide whether they want it separately from the other projects, because there might be some people that feel transportation is that important, or transit's that important, that 3B, they're willing to give up $200,000 for that 500. There might be. So I didn't like throwing that 3B out. That was my point, but I will support this.
I believe that I have the guidance that I need, and I will keep you all in the loop. We've got the meeting on February 5th. Now, I've got this scheduled for our council meeting for a formal vote on it on, what's the 12th, is it? Okay, on February 8th. So, and we can have a further discussion on what happened with Fulton County mayors and commissioners, and what the options are, and what we've got folks checking into, and we can just move forward that way. So I think I'm good. I don't need a motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody's good, we're moving on. And number eight, consideration to modify the scoring criteria of the sidewalk program policy, prioritize sidewalk projects within the city of Roswell. Mr. Cox?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Can you see my screen okay? Okay, well, I wanted to just revisit some of the sidewalk scoring criteria that we have talked about in the past. Yeah, a lot of this material you have already seen before, so I'm going to go through it very quickly, and then we can talk about some of the final recommendations based on your previous guidance. Just to recap, five years ago, we had nothing in our system to prioritize sidewalk gaps. At that time, staff did a deep dive on creating an inventory and coming up with scoring criteria for ranking prioritizing sidewalk gaps all across the city, and it went through several rounds of review and discussion with the council, and it has been in place ever since then. More recently, we had our bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was adopted just over a year ago, and part of that task was to kind of dust off those recommendations, and our consultant team made some recommendations to modify that scoring criteria. And we had presented some of those to you again recently, last August, and again in October. I believe at the August committee meeting, we had four or five scenarios. In the October meeting, we narrowed it down to two scenarios, and the good news today, I only have one scenario to show you. So I'm really looking forward to getting close to a resolution on this. I think we're almost there. Just to recap, here is our current sidewalk matrix, or sorry, our map, basically showing the total number of projects, which is currently 133. This was kind of, I heard this mentioned in the discussion about 30 minutes ago, there is a very daunting number here on the screen, is the $47 million. That is the estimated cost to complete. So that is something that, we can talk about this till we're blue in the face, but that, you know, that number is still going to be out there, and it's going to take many years, if not decades, to build all of these sidewalks. But we can definitely talk about the criteria today. You guys have seen this many times before. This is the current scoring criteria, basically how the point system works on all the sidewalk gaps. I won't go into detail on all of these. The one, there's a couple I'd like to focus on, just to refresh your memory. The first one is the perceived safety issue, and what that is, is a staff person would go out and make a judgment call. They would basically go on site and determine how safe or unsafe they felt along the roadside there. I know that's not the most scientific method, but we heard feedback from council that we should maybe use a better data metric, and traffic volume is what we're recommending to substitute in its place. You'll see that here in a few minutes. Another one that's a little confusing is, there's a sidewalk on the other side of the road. Again, what that means is, if there's a sidewalk gap in front of your house, and you live on a busy collector or arterial roadway, we do track it, it does get points. But if there's a sidewalk across the street from you, you get less points. During our public outreach with our citizens a year and a half ago, the common thing was, well, they say, well, yeah, there's a great sidewalk across the street, but I can't get to it. The road has 10,000, 15,000 cars a day, it's not safe to get to it. So we corrected this, or we're recommending correcting this to, so sidewalk gaps aren't being penalized due to safety. And then the other criteria, there's a couple safety here, and then obviously proximity to different features and assets around the city. And you're going to see this again in a few slides with the recommended changes. There are items we track, but we don't score. We staff track all of these, I won't go through these in detail. I always like to point out number seven, capital projects and developer opportunities. This is to, we track this carefully, because we don't want to pursue a sidewalk if a transportation project is going to build it for us down the road, either six months from now or four years from now. GDOT's building a project, we're not going to invest our transportation dollars on a sidewalk that another entity will build for us. Same goes for developers, we have probably a half dozen or dozen parcels around the city, we track, and they're ripe for development, so we don't want to invest our dollars, where a developer will build them for us. The bike pet plan, made a few recommendations, we've talked about these in the past. We talked about maybe correcting that scoring method for sidewalk gaps on different sides of the road. We decided to use traffic volumes on that. Again, that's to correct any sidewalk gaps from being inadvertently penalized for being on a busy street. We also consider population density. Our density is kind of mixed around the city, so we figured there's going to be more demand and higher densely populated areas of town. We use census block data, and again, we're going to, once we get the census data, in about a year or so from now, we'll obviously revisit that again. We also consider transit accessibility. We decided to merge that with our commercial corridors. The reason for that was because our MARTA bus routes basically mirror our commercial corridors, so we didn't want to give extra points to them, but we figured we could blend those two together, and it did bump the points up in a few places. And then lastly, we talked a lot about this in the autumn, was talking about cost estimates. That, you know, we talked about that $47 million total. We wanted to look at projects to kind of determine, is there a better way to factor in lower-cost projects and get some on the bill quicker? Or do we want to focus on more high-dollar ones? There's different ways to figure it, but we decided to award points based on discussion with the mayor and council on factoring in cost estimates. I have a graphic here in just a moment that'll summarize this, but just to recap, we are recommending keeping three of the criteria untouched, we will leave them as-is. That would be the speed of traffic, that's a safety factor. If there's a desire path, that's the little cattle trail, you know, you see on the little grassy areas where you get, there's evidence of pedestrian demand. Also, if it's on our hub-and-spoke trail system, that's the map of trails around the city that was approved in the bike pet plan a year ago, we would recommend modifying five of the criteria. I mentioned we would replace that human judgment factor with a data metric, we would substitute it with traffic volumes. So the higher the traffic on our, if it had a higher threshold of traffic, the sidewalk gap would receive more points, because there's more cars out there, make it, so we track that a little better. One comment we heard from multiple council members in the August and October meetings was, we wanted to focus more on public schools and parks. Safe routes to school is very important to our city, and also accessing our parks. So we have increased the points, or we're recommending increasing the points for sidewalks within a quarter mile of schools and parks. You'll see that in just a second. We're combining the transit with our commercial businesses, so that those points will be kind of mirrored, or they'll be merged together. And I mentioned a second ago, we'd increase points for the sidewalk gaps on our busier roads, where there's an existing sidewalk on the other side of the street. That way sidewalks aren't inadvertently penalized. And then the last two are new ones, we're recommending adding a population density criteria, would award a few points for, based on the more densely populated areas of the city. And then we would factor in project cost, and we picked the thresholds of $300,000 and $150,000. And then this is all up for debate, but we can add more points for projects that cost less than those. Here is the summary, kind of a table of what I just showed you. What's highlighted in blue are the changes. You can see, we changed a couple of the criteria, and we changed some of the points. So just, I'll just recap this quickly. The perceived safety issue, we're recommending changing that to ADT, that's traffic volume, daily traffic volume. We basically increased the points, almost doubling them for the higher-volume routes. We would basically double the points if it's near a school or park. We would add the MARTA bus stops in the commercial development. We'd also increase points on anything over traffic volume over 10,000. And actually, that should be, I believe, 10 points. I believe we upped it to right there, so I need to fix that. And then the new ones are population density and cost of projects. Again, I'm open to guidance or recommendations Again, I'm open to guidance or recommendations from the mayor and council. We basically selected 15 points for anything under 150,008 or anything under 300,000. And there are currently 33 sidewalk gaps under the $150,000 threshold. So you would see quite a jump in points on some of those lower dollar projects would allow us to get more on the ground quickly. Here is the top 20. If this were to be approved today as is, as I've recommended, this is what your top 20 would look like. You'll see a lot of the familiar projects on here. You, I think everyone's seen these before. A lot of common sidewalk gaps here. We also added some staff notes. That was one of the comments we received earlier this summer was to add some reasons how we're pursuing these or why we're not pursuing them. The ones in bold here are ones we're pursuing now. We have right-of-way acquisition underway on one of them. We're pursuing the design on another on Hardscrabble Road. And we're looking at scope development on Two on Old Alabama. And then some of these other ones are, you know, they're candidates for a developer to build or they're on the border with another city that might require some coordination with them or GDOT has a project on. And in closing, the next steps would be to get your feedback today. If this is something that you would like to pursue, or we can take this back and sharpen our pencils a little bit more on these criteria or the point weighting, and then decide if it's ready to go to a future council meeting or bring it back to another committee at a later date. That's definitely something we could talk about now. And then just a reminder, we are constantly looking at updating our cost estimates. As you recall, during our bike ped plan, we widened or we changed the width on a lot of our sidewalks. When the bike ped plan got adopted, we had a lot of sidewalks that were previously estimated at five feet. They have since gone to either six feet during UDC changes or recent developments, or they've gone up to 10 feet as part of a multi-use trail. So we're updating a lot of those cost estimates over the next several months. So it's very possible some of those estimates will change and likely increase in the months ahead. So with that, Gary, I'd like to yield for questions and get some feedback from the mayor and council.
Councilor Palmer.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. I have, I have three comments. One, I certainly support the strong majority of your recommendations with the caveat of two comments. First comment, I actually don't have an opinion or a position. I just wanna, wanna raise it is, so I fully support including public transportation stops as counted as commercial as a way to make public transportation more accessible, so I fully support that. I guess just my question is, I'm wondering if there's certain stops similar to how population density you're gonna add, which I fully support, similar to that. I'm wondering if we know are there certain stops that have a lot of usage and some stops that barely have any usage or any demand? In which case, I'd really wanna make sure we just be giving the points to the ones that actually are in demand versus the ones that might be a convenient location for, for, you know, MARTA, but not, not actually used by, by residents or, or anything like that. So, so that's, that's a kind of a question. The other thing is regarding the cost of project, I think, I think there's way too many points being allotted there. And in fact, I even lean towards thinking, so I, I was one of the people in agreement that we should be looking at the cost and seeing what's, what's doable. And I think Councilman Tizer had actually brought it up first where, where I was in complete agreement, where if it's one project for a million dollars versus 10 projects for 100,000 each, you know, council really weighing that. However, my concern with getting points for it, I'm concerned is distorting. What I think my preference would be, as we look at that Excel sheet that you often show us, I'd prefer to see if there was maybe a color coding that, that every, that it all stays black and white as it is today, but if it's under, you know, 150,000, it's red. If it's under, you know, 300,000, it's yellow. So between that, something along those lines, so that just, it's, it's clear to the public that, hey, this one is ranked the highest purely on actual traffic needs, but knowing that council can and potentially will just look at their budget available and see where they feel they can make the most impact. That'd probably be my preference. I don't, I don't feel that strongly about the details, but certainly I'm concerned with that high number of points you've given would, would just be too much of a heavy weighting compared to real safety needs.
Councilor Hall.
I, I agree with that, that the cost of project, I, I don't know that we necessarily should have points allotted to that. I mean, that, that's a decision that perhaps could be shifted as we're looking at budgeting, knowing what the costs are of each project.
Councilor Vaughn.
Thank you. Yes, I'm, but first of all, I'm very excited that public schools and city parks point 25 miles are now from five to 10. I'm so excited to see that and I hope that this will pass. So then, and I understand why it's only point two-five of the mile is because if you do have a mile which still people can walk to and from a school, city parks and commercial, we will never finish. I know, so, I mean, my goal is when we finish a point 25, when we're done, then we can look into extending to point five in the future, once that we finish a point 25 first. I get that. So that's good. And then in terms of the points for the, the cost of the project, so I think, yeah, there's too many points. If we keep the point, that's fine with me, but not as many as is presented here to weigh. If he's a color-coded or, or points, it's, it's fine with me, either one, but definitely need to be reduced if we keep the points. That is my, my perspective on that. So, yeah, those are my comments. Thank you for, Dave, for the presentation.
Councilor Tizer.
Couple of comments real quick. I was not the person who suggested the smaller ones. I don't believe, although my memory could fail me, because this whole issue hadn't, hadn't, hadn't seemed as important as it might now. And it's one of those items that, as we move forward with the discussion we just had a few moments ago, this is now important because the possibility now exists that we can do these things if the citizens of Roswell pass their, you know, this upcoming potential referendum. And so now it's interesting. It's very interesting because we can finally start to think about actually getting something done. So, you know, I could argue about, you know, whether I like one version versus another. In the end, I think most of the critical ones under any version come near the top. And then the other ones are in sort of a second tier. There's a couple of, of problem areas I think that need to be addressed, but I think those are gonna get addressed in some separate corridor studies that go on that might raise them up a little bit as, as that project that, you know, might come through or, or a different project. So thank you very much, Dave.
Councilor Jerry.
Thanks, Dave. I think it's awesome. I agree and disagree on, on the points for the smaller projects. I think that safety A is first and foremost and should outweigh the projects. I think there should be some points to projects that we can complete here and there based upon the small number of dollars going toward that. Because getting stuff done hasn't, is tough. And there's a lot of things in the city, you know, over the last three years and couple months that we've passed and have not started. So I'd like to see some things getting done with, especially sidewalks. So I don't know how that balance occurs, but I, I mean, I, I think this is a great, great start and in making it better. So I, I think there's gotta be some type of recognition of trying to get some key pieces done through some points, but I, if it's heavily weighted in that manner, I, I don't have any feeling one way or the other, as long as safety is taken into consideration.
Councilor Worthy.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think that the cost, just the, the number of points that are allocated probably skew it a little bit more to the lower cost projects. I think one way to fix that just might be to bring that point allocation more in line with the other allocations down to a five to 10 range. And I do think from this list, it's kind of elevated some, you know, really areas where we can make a big impact right away by, by working through this list. I think it's, it has seen a good job of bringing up some priority areas. But thanks again for the work and for all the work that you've done to look into the scoring criteria. I think this is really moving forward, so appreciate the work.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion?
Councilor Vaughn.
Yeah, it's motion to move forward, but reviewing just the line of the cost for the points, review the number of the points and then bring it back. I don't know where it's gonna be back to committee or it's gonna be back to mayor and council meeting, but with the modified scoring for the cost of the product. That is my motion.
Dave, was the next step to come to council at a regular meeting?
We, just to be clear, you mentioned the modified cost. You're just about reducing the point criteria down to a more, I won't say reasonable level, but maybe a five to 10?
More aligned with the other points for the other criterias. And keep it up, the public school and city park moving to 10 each of them. And all, all the suggestions you make there, all of them, and reduce the, the number of points for the cost more aligned to the other criterias.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
Okay, there's motion to move forward. Councilor Vaughn, I believe the intent is to come to the next council meeting. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes, we can be ready for the next council meeting if that's the only modification.
Okay, and there was a modification. You wanna clarify that one more time, Councilmember Vaughn, so we can capture that properly in a minute?
So, well, yes, the, all the one in blue from the suggested recommendations, move forward, those recommendation in blue on your review scoring criteria chart, and then reduce the amount of points on the cost of the project. More in align, alignment with the other points for public school, city parks, commercial development, safety, and go trail with all of, more in line with them, so it doesn't weigh too much compared with the other very important criterias on the chart.
Dave, you got what you need?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Is there a second on that motion? Thank you, my Councilor Judy. Any further questions or comments from the council? All in favor, please raise your hands. And then as you had, thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute break, so we'll be back at 10:10. Okay, welcome back and moving on to other items on today's agenda. Item number nine, discussion of the roles and responsibilities of an economic development director. Councilmember Worthy.
Yes, thank you, Gary, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I asked to add this item to the agenda for discussion today. As you all know, it's something we've been talking about for a while and it's been elevated as a priority in the strategic plan and was budgeted for on Monday night. So I think this is a perfect time to have a good discussion. We're also at an excellent point to add this position with the adoption of the strategic plan in the upcoming comprehensive plan. You probably, I hope you all had a chance to look at the information that was in the packet. There was a lot of information there. There's really good article with six case studies on some cities who have been successful with economic development plans. One of the things that really struck me is kind of the long-term commitment that it takes to have a vision and to really stick with it. For, an example is Greenville, which started in the seventies and they've really added on to that kind of incrementally every decade and continue to keep growing. There's also a, several different job descriptions and you probably saw there's a big variation in responsibilities and roles. In some cities, it's more of a marketing and communications tourism position, you know, wherein others it actually oversees comdat. So just wanted to give you some examples to see how the economic director position is, it functions in other cities. And then, just to help guide our discussion, I was hoping today that we could have a discussion among ourselves about what we expected of the position and at the end, hoping that we can give Gary some guidance to have a job description written to come back to us and then go out and, and recruit for the position. With that, I do have a couple of questions. If you could put on the screen with IT at this point, just to help kind of guide our discussion, some states, some things that I think we need to keep in mind as we consider putting the job description together. Just reading through these quickly, you know, what value do we expect this position to deliver? What's the primary focus of the position on new versus existing businesses? Is there a geographic area that we would ask them to focus on right away? Industry sectors? What's the position's strategic and day-to-day responsibilities? Where does it fit within the organization? How does it coordinate with city departments? And then also, how does the director coordinate with and complement our partner agencies with Roswell Inc., Visit Roswell and Roswell Arts Fund? I think we have those partner agencies in place already that have an economic development function. So I think it's important that, that we consider how, how those roles all work together. And then finally, what experience or professional credentials are we looking for? And then finally, I think this is the most important, one of the most important questions is how can we help make this position successful? So with that, Gary, do you have any comments or anything you would like to add as to what the process would be and how you have seen this position working successfully in other places?
Oh, yeah, I think, you know, the process, recruitment process would be just like any other position within the city. We would obviously come up with a job description. We do have a one that we did, I guess, back in 2008 for Economic Development Manager, which has some good bones and some good language in what we would want to get in a candidate. It's gotta be revised and probably wordsmithed a little bit to reflect our current operating environment, the current partner organizations that we have that are executing economic development initiatives and capture all that with a job description. But, yeah, the process would be just like any other recruitment. And, I mean, I, I think we have a ton of work that can be done. I think we have a lot of good agencies that need assistance from the city and some oversight. And I think, like you said, I think we're right for this and I'm, I'm curious to hear what the council thinks about the position.
Thank you. And with that, I'd love to hear from everyone else. What are your thoughts?
Councilmember Vaughn, floor is open.
Thank you. So, well, I'm gonna start saying that So well, I'm going to start saying that last Monday, finally, we added the economic development director position to our budget. You know, I I understood the reality as well as the needs and wants of the residents and taxpayers of the Roswell over over five years ago, when I first started to advocate for an economic development position. You know, I'm sorry that this much needed decision was not taken five or three years ago. But I'm so pleased and excited that an economic development director position is a reality today. It's a reality today, and I want to celebrate that big time. And and I'm looking so forward to come with the job description, goals and et cetera. Because like I said, I've been advocating over five years. And sometimes taking a lot of hit, which is fine, you know, this is what we are here for. And but it's a reality today, and I'm so excited. And I would like to celebrate with all of you this mayor and council decision.
Councilmember Bartle? Thank you. I I definitely have some some feedback on on how we on how we definitely should be setting up this this role or at least what I envisioned from it. And and yeah, I definitely want to give some some definitely stress just the the reason I think the taxpayers have reason to celebrate after finally having this this role approved. I've been advocating for this role for years, not nearly as many years as Councilman Zapata. He's been advocating for this for five years. I have not. But that being said, after after some years, I have seen really the need for strategic economic development with full accountability to the taxpayers. And and really gaining direction and and receiving direction from the elected representatives being this this mayor and council. So I think that's absolutely what's crucial. For me, what I see is wanting a model in in how it's the role set up. I I really want to see because I I feel Alpharetta and I appreciate and give give credit to either council member Willsey or or staff whoever put this pulled this information together. I was really glad to see the sample, Alpharetta sample in there and Milton's as well. And I saw there were a number of other cities, but again, Alpharetta and Milton being similar cities that have a successful track record. I want to see, I want to see that really being somewhat of a backbone. However, I want to narrow the focus. And the reason I want to narrow the focus is because twofold. One is the fact that Alpharetta and Milton, they've been they've been doing this for longer. They've they've had this as a strategic role in their organization for a longer amount of time. And and when you're when you're more established, you do have the ability to potentially take on more and do more. I want to, I want to really start out with a with a narrow focus and that narrow focus needs to be really really strategic economic development and how we're attracting you know, destinations, how we're attracting jobs. And you know, that that gives the opportunity for Roswell residents to be able to work in in Roswell. And and so I think that's absolutely crucial. And 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 also too, we can't be everything to everyone. And I think that's something that having a a strategic economic development director in the city of Roswell, being accountable to the mayor and council and therefore accountable to the taxpayers, is going to give us the opportunity to publicly really create really that vision, those goals and and what what this city wants out of out of the economic, out of economic development. Councilmember Willsey brought up, you know, a a great, you know, question being, you know, do we want this to be geographic? And for me, I have a very strong view on on how I want this to be. I certainly want it to be citywide. And it's a role that absolutely is is supporting citywide for for all, you know, commercial areas and and areas for, you know, economic development. For commercial, retail, office, just overall destinations in general. But I want this mayor and council to be able to give assignments on specific geographic details. And what I mean by that is, for example, on the east side, right now, I've I've just seen it looks like we have another strip mall that that is going to really need to be brought back to life. So we've got, we've got one strip mall that's that's basically, you know, basically been, you know, needed to come back to life for years. There's currently an application in place, so I don't think it's it's appropriate to give any comments one way or another on on something like that, but separately, we have, we have a a strip mall where another landmark business is is leaving. And and frankly, we we need to make sure that we're not just going to have a large that we're not going to have that turn into a large blighted, empty, empty strip mall. And so what I'm going to want to see is one of the first orders of business is that that we as a mayor and council direct this economic development director to really focus on that that parcel and focus on attracting opportunities for redevelopment and for just really repurposing and just different ways to to give really our our east side residents just a an opportunity for for something to really enjoy. So so that's number one from a geographic standpoint and all that. And again, coinciding with that is the question was, what type of experiences should this person have? And I and I believe the ideal candidate is someone that has a successful track record of economic development. Again, this is even though we didn't have this in house in the city of Roswell. This is not, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. This is something that's been successful elsewhere. Again, where? Great examples, Alpharetta and Milton. And if you read through their articles, and I can certainly share a lot of information with anybody that's that's curious, there's been some great things documented in Alpharetta and Milton and how they do it. And one of the big, big reasons why is is goes to the, we can't be everything to everybody, you know, different, you know, any, anything is not considered an economic development win. It has to be something that is right for the character of the community. And that's something that we need to officially define. And I think having an in-house economic development director will help us do that. There's some articles Milton's done a fantastic job of that, of being really targeted on what what is the economic development that their taxpayers want them pursuing versus what is not. And so that's something that I think we really need to to go through and really have that public discussion and transparency. There should be no taxpayer that's wondering, you know, what is this person doing? I in the sense of, you know, what 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 are their, what are their goals and what is it they want to achieve? That's something we we're fully documenting. So so again, really excited initiative. You know, definitely been advocating it for a long time, but again, just so happy that unanimously we were able to vote on it this Monday and really appreciated council support in that amendment we brought forward. So this is, this is an exciting, exciting win. And and again, really hoping we can hire this person before July first. So again, they can start working on two things. One, making sure that that strip mall will be brought back to life in perhaps a different way. Looking for other geographic focuses we want. And number three, what is, what is the vision? What is it that we want them to achieve and what is, what is really the view of the success we want our our tax dollars working towards?
Councilmember Willsey?
Yes, um, thank you, Mike, and I I agree with everything you said. I, you know, that's one of the reasons why I put the geographic area in there so that we would be able to put some focus on areas of specific need, whether it's East Roswell or the Holken Bridge Corridor. I think it's really important to me that this position is able to coordinate and be a liaison with the resources that we already have in place. With, you know, Visit Roswell has a very specific function with promoting hospitality and tourism. Roswell Inc. is doing, I think, a fantastic job with marketing and communications and working with existing businesses and, you know, implementing the SEDP and some of the things, you know, that they are doing proactively. I think in that with the Roswell DDA as well, I think that is another arm that I should have mentioned earlier as as someone that this agency would work with. As I would also see them working very closely with com dev, with transportation and providing us some feedback on the economic impact of policies that that come forward and projects that are proposed. So, you know, I really see them as this person kind of bringing everything together and being someone who is communicating to us what's going on in the community. And just just really kind of being a positive force to bring everything together where I think until now, we've been a little bit siloed with the economic development activities.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Gary. And I also look at this individual as very much working hand in hand with com dev and and basically becoming a partner to potential developers and businesses that want to come to our area. And an example, I I see an example where we have a potential developer or builder coming to our area and asking potentially to do a project in perhaps an area that is not zoned for that project. So instead of basically turning that person down, they could come alongside that and partner with with that potential developer person that's coming into our area and say, you know what? This isn't the right character area. You don't have the right zoning to do this and and you would, you know, you would need to, you know, almost change your entire project to do this here, but there are other opportunities in other areas. Now, given, given that's all private land ownership, but at least there could be some direction given to this person so that they're just not dismissed at hand. So that's where I I'm very excited because there are a lot of people that have expressed coming to Roswell to do business, and this is somebody that can help guide them to bring the kind of business and development that strategically we want in in the area. So again, I I'm very, I'm very pleased and excited and and see them as a really great partner to community development.
Councilmember Judy?
Thank you, Gary. I I too am excited for this position. I think it is the right time now to be bringing this person on. We will have a new community development director here shortly. So to bring them on hand in hand to look at the future. To councilmember Hall's point, I think that the ability to be in house when people come in and are looking for help and work in Roswell Inc. And all the programs they bring and putting them in touch with them and vice versa, Roswell Inc. sending them into somebody internal to get this done is really going to beef up all the all the opportunity. I think two key things about this position, A, it needs to remain apolitical. This this position should be a position for the city of Roswell as a whole and should be not a position that is played with politically. B, I think that this position, as Councilman Palermo said, we don't have to reinvent the wheel and over the next few months when Gary comes out with the job description, we can add and delete anything we see as a council that needs to be included in that job description. I do know to councilmember Palermo's point of the strip mall, I know our existing Roswell Inc. is already on top of that and it looks promising. So I think when you have internal aspect as well and we're able to work out how they work together, it will be a real force to be reckoned with in the region. So very excited about it. Hope we can hire this person, let this person come in and do our, do the job without us getting in the way. And I think it will be a very successful position that we bring on along with the new com dev director.
I agree that, sorry to, sorry to cut in, but I I didn't realize we're going to go two and a half hours today and I have a, unfortunately, you have a hard stop. I, as you know, I had three items for discussion, which again, I think it's always healthy to have public discussion and want to gain business inputs. So more than happy if you want to have that discussion and just obviously we've got some business inputs, which is, which is crucial. But I'm sorry, I can't stay on. So thank you, everybody. And certainly happy to have that discussion on next committee meeting or or whatever this committee determines. Thanks.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you. So yeah, like I said, you know, I've been advocating for over five years because I believe that it's always the right time to do the right thing. It's always the right time to do the right thing. I think I'm quoting someone here, but I don't remember, but but it's a very smart line. So what I see here is you know, a director who will work and coordinate efforts with economic development agencies. And I'm going to mention some of them. I might be leaving some of them outside, unfortunately, but you know, the Georgia Department of Economic Development, North Fulton Chamber of Commerce, Roswell Inc., which is the Roswell Chamber of Commerce, Visit Roswell Convention and Visitor Bureau, Roswell Downtown Development Authority, Georgia Power Community and Economic Development, Consulates, we have several consulates in the metro area, and industries organizations. So this, I I visualize this position and this candidate and this person dealing with coordinating and work, working with all these economic development related agencies. In terms of education degree, a bachelor degree in business administration, economics, economic development, marketing, public administration, with a significant experience in public and private sector. And a and a master degree, highly desired master degree. And obviously, you know, you can see that maybe you can require less work experience. If they have a master degree, you can, you know, compromise a length of working experience versus having a master degree. You know, we have to have to work on the identify, develop and implement short and long term opportunities, plans and projects, gathers, interpret, interpret and prepare data for studies, reports and recommendations to the mayor and council. Design strategies to identify, attract and retain quality businesses and developers according with the city's needs and so you know, and so those are one, some of the 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 most relevant tasks and duties that I see in this position and the qualification. And so I think that then staff and, you know, we have Jim Hardner, which our is our HR director, human resource director, who will, you know, fill on the blanks of our main points here discussed today.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, what does the council do, want to do with the remaining items on the committee agenda? Do we want to go through them?
I think we should.
Okay. Item number 10, consideration to amend the no amplified condition to a sidewalk cafe permit. Fourteen Elizabeth Wade, Canton Street, SC twenty dash zero two and SC twenty dash zero three. This is to be introduced by Councilmember Palermo. I don't know if another councilor wants to jump in. Councilmember Hall?
Uh, yes, I I can speak to it and I can maybe give you some background of why we brought this back. This item was voted on at a council, not the last council meeting, but the mayor and council meeting before. And councilmember Judy, councilmember Willsey and and I voted basically to elect, to continue to allow some amplified music. And there was some very good discussion about that. After the vote, I had conversations with with some council members, well, councilmember Palermo being one of them, and I thought that maybe we should consider this because it might be a very big hardship on this particular business. And it felt very heavy handed to i- in the way the decision was made. And so that's why we discussed it and we were bringing it back. And I would like, you know, I would love councilmember Judy or councilmember Willsey to jump in and and the, you know, what has changed or 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 to see if we can allow some sort of music for this business that is not allowed to have it anymore so that they can continue to have a viable business.
Councilmember Tazzer?
Nothing heavy handed was done and they can still do exactly what our ordinances allow. We have now heard on the on this one and on the next two items from nearly every business up and down Canton Street. The businesses have spoken. We need to listen. Thank you.
Councilmember Judy?
So my take on this is, I I did copy everybody on an email I sent yesterday back to one of the business owners. My, my point on this is this. Uh, my, my point on this is this. This was not a decision that I feel should have been made last time when it was taken away because there was no research done, there was no best practice. And there was no anything done to, to take it away. Uh, in retrospect, now based upon what I understand is based upon the ordinances we already have in place, we'd have to change our ordinance to allow them to do it because our ordinance before actually said they couldn't do it. So in this case, I think we, if this is the case, if we're going to go down this path and we're going to look at this, we need to look at best practices. We need to speak to ComDev. We need to speak to our police chief. We need to speak to our prosecutor, um, on how you're gonna enforce this if you do this for one business or all the businesses. We need to look at different cities that have outdoor amplified music and how they handle it. This needs to be a larger approach rather than just throwing something back on the agenda and, um, with zero, um, research and response to what happened before. So as I didn't support them taking it away, it's still not allowed under our ordinance if I am correct, uh, Mr. Halsey. Uh, we, if we're going to do this, we need to look at the entire street, talk to all the businesses, talk to all the uh, departments within our, um, building that are, that are going to have to enforce this or put it in place and come to a agreement using everything. But just having knee jerk reactions of throwing stuff back on um, political maneuvering is, it is not right. And I, I believe we heard from, as councilman uh, Tizer said, almost every, uh, restaurant and, uh, a couple of businesses up and down Canton Street, um, that they were not in favor of this or the other two, and they were not well thought out, uh, positioned and they were just thrown on, on a committee. Um, so I, I can't support this today for that reason, just as I could support Councilman Tizer before.
Any further questions? Councilor was bottom.
So I think that, you know, the main, the spirit of that is not going over the rights of other businesses in the area. So, you know, if everybody put a speaker on the front of the establishment, then, uh, become of music competition, you know, who has the coolest music or the louder music. So I think that, uh, if we're thinking about a regulation or ordinance or something, we need to contemplate maybe a distance between, uh, restaurants. If you, you know, just to give an example, if you are 300 yards, then you are authorized to have an outside. But if you are, you know, 110 feet away from the next, uh, business establishment right next to you, then, uh, where do you stop? Putting a amplifier on the sidewalks to compete with each other for the coolest louder music. So, uh, I think that, you know, if we want to look into that in the future and have a clear regulation in which cases and in which condition you can have an outside, um, uh, amplifier equipment, then I'm happy to, to look at that and support that. But, uh, my first, uh, approach is respecting the rights of the neighbor. Uh, especially when you have right next door each other neighbors. And then if you authorize one, what is gonna stop to get the, the next one one? And then the next one will complain. And so, so I think we need to, if, if this is the desire of this mayor and council to come with a clear policy of outdoor speakers on their commercial establishment or restaurants, then, uh, I'm all for to, to take a look on that.
Um, I would like to interject here and I'll, I'll speak to this and then I will also, um, speak to the other two that aren't, we haven't called yet, but my, my conversation or my narrative speaks to all three of them. Number one, um, these three items were put on this agenda. Uh, it's done several things. It, um, these items have put staff into hyper mode. They don't wanna be caught flat footed. They don't know where these agenda items are going. Number two, it's put elected officials on hyper mode because we can't figure out what's going, where it's coming from. And then number three, and most importantly, it's put our businesses and our residents in the area, because there are many homes in the area, on hyper mode. Because they are so uncertain on what's going to happen with all three of these items. And, uh, they're nervous. And I'll tell you, I understand that this was put on by a single council member. But what people see and what they misconstrue is it's the city wanting to do this. I do not support any of these. I do not support moving forward with any of these items, including this one. Thank you.
Councilor was bottom.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm not, uh, it's, I think that, you know, discussions and conversations always help. Um, so initiative from any, any council members are welcome, at least from my perspective. So, uh, not only initiative from staff, but also from the elected officials. And he, actually in any resident who wants to bring a forward an initiative for, uh, elected official to discuss, I'm not, uh, against that at all. So I, actually I welcome that. Uh, I, I have a, a good discussion and good conversation. Uh, like this one, I guess the intention is to start a conversation, see where, where this goes. So, um, on this particular item, uh, I will be happy to continue discussions and see if it's the policy that we need to direct staff to come with suggest policy regarding outdoor speaker systems. Um, but you know, again, a conversation is healthy and initiative from anybody, from anybody are welcome, at least from my perspective.
And I do feel that conversations are healthy and, um, I would like to reiterate that, um, all conversations do not have to be had in a committee. Uh, in, if someone brings forward an initiative, to me that says that that person is going to champion those initiatives. Uh, you, why would you bring it forward if you weren't gonna champion it? Um, I'll give you an example. I know every single one of you have received numerous emails from a constituent that wants us to legalize marijuana. I haven't seen that on the committee agenda yet. This, the committee is not set up to just throw spaghetti at the wall and see what sticks. The committee is for us to move forward with legislative action. Not just have discussions, not like I said, throw spaghetti at the wall. So I would encourage any council member to have many conversations with me, with other council members, uh, and see what the, the climate is to talk to the business owners, to talk to staff. No one has talked to staff about any of these three initiatives. No one has talked to me about them. So to me, that means council member Palermo is moving forward and championing these items. And what we need to do is let folks know, are we gonna, are we gonna move forward with these? Do they need to stay tuned for more to come? Uh, like I said, I do not support this.
Councilor was bottom.
Thank you. So, well, I see number, item number 10, we're discussing this Michael Palermo and Christine Hall, co-sponsor of this. So maybe we can, uh, oh, Chris, Ms. Christine Hall. Council member Christine Hall can decide if she wants to defer this item or vote on this item. Uh, and then the next two, since I understood now from the mayor that council member Palermo is, uh, bringing forward this for our, um, discussion, is not present today, we might want to defer the next two items since the one who, uh, brought forward this, um, is not present at the time. So, uh, this, this would be my approach for it, item 10, 11 and 12, defer 11 and 12. And council member Christine Hall can decide what we like to do with item number 10.
Well, um, let me interject here because council member Palermo shouldn't put something on an agenda where he can't attend. Um, this was his to carry for, these were his to carry forward. I understand council member Hall is, uh, jointly presenting this first item. My only point is, you know, you all can bring it back. You, as, as you've seen, uh, you can bring it back time after time after time when you don't get the answers you want. What I wanna do right here and right now is let the public know, let staff know, let the other, my other elected officials in Roswell know my stance on this. I do not support any one of these three initiatives. If you wanna bring it back month after month, week after week, that's your prerogative. I'm telling you right now, I do not support them. And I would like to hear from the other council members as well. Because this is an issue in our community and I don't think it's proper to drag it out without decisions.
Councilor Tizer.
Thank you. Um, I've clearly seen from the businesses involved that it would hurt and in one case, the business owner said destroy or kill, I believe, her business if we close Canton Street. So I'm fundamentally against it. Um, I've spoken to business leaders. I've seen their emails. Uh, closing Canton Street is a hugely bad idea. And I'll be against that. I will not be able to support that. The second item, we've also seen from restaurant owners of the economic carnage it can cause to all other restaurant owners. And they've been very clear about that. I can't support that one. If this council would like to revisit our noise ordinances, I think that's fine. Uh, today, uh, we have a noise ordinance that's very interesting and very unique. And it says that you can not have noise above a certain decibel level and Mr. Halsey can tell us what that level is. And that level is measured not from the receiver's door, but from the edge of the sender's property line. And that's very interesting because it really takes into account the kinds of things the council members have brought up. It takes into account residents of the area. It takes into account other businesses, other diners, other people who are enjoying themselves on Canton Street. And if we wanna revisit that decibel level, if we wanted to revisit that, that model, I think that's fine. If we wanna revisit some sort of licensing for it, I think that's fine, whatever methodology that is. Okay? But enforcing our ordinances and paying attention to ordinances that were carefully drawn out by, by residents of the area, supported by businesses and frankly followed by businesses, um, uh, I think is, is, is very important. And so unless we change the ordinances, we should follow our ordinances. Thank you.
Councilor Hall.
Uh, yes, I, I have a procedural question on, uh, item number 10. It was brought for an agenda vote. Um, we can either, I can motion and, and not have second and we can have it die. I, i- is my question. Or can we, um, change it to a discussion and bring it back again? Or, or we can continue to bring it back after we have more information? I, I guess I'm, my question is, I'm asking for guidance as to the best way to, um, have an opportunity to discuss it, do more research and bring it back again.
Uh, you really don't need to do anything. I mean, you can just defer it or, I mean, if they just don't do anything, it's, they can just bring it back whenever you wanna bring it back. So you don't have to take action.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can move on and you can, whoever wants to bring it back, um, can bring it back.
All right, thank you.
Are we ready to move on? Councilor Judy, do you have a comment?
Yes, um, just real quick, I, I again, think that none of these three were even close to ready for committee. They were, uh, brought, um, in response to uh, possibly one, uh, constituent in all the, uh, issues. Um, if we're going to pass, uh, legislation for all of Roswell, um, I think that things brought to this committee need to be, um, run by, uh, staff and, uh, business and well thought out. Um, none of these three are that today. Um, and they make, I feel really sorry for, uh, any business and would love to help them, uh, but we need to do that in a comprehensive manner. Um, and as you've seen from the businesses up and down Canton Street, um, in response to these three items, there was a lot of angst, uh, given to them, uh, about their livelihood during a pandemic. Cause we did three items, or sorry, the council member did put three items on this agenda that, um, were not well thought out. So, uh, I, uh, can't support any of them as well and, um, actually don't think they should be deferred until, um, they're, they are actually vetted, um, would say have not been.
Councilor was bottom.
Thank you. Well, yes, uh, yeah, I'm not gonna judge the motive or the reason of, uh, council member who brought this forward. I'm not gonna be a judge. I'm gonna, I don't wanna be judging, uh, people or, uh, judging elected officials, the reasons to bring this or speculate on that, why it was brought or what was not brought. So I'm not gonna do that. Uh, I also believe that if the council member who wants to discuss this with all of us is not present, this should be, uh, just move forward. I mean, we just move forward and then council member who brought this forward might have the decision to bring it back to us or not. But again, I'm not gonna speculate with reasons or no reasons or motive or no motive of these items to be here, uh, at the agenda today. So, um, you know, I will suggest just to move them, uh, move on on those three items, uh, if council member Hall, uh, agree on item number 10, which is co-sponsoring. So the item 11 and 12, we can just move on and then decide the council members to bring it back or not in the future. That would be my approach. But yeah, again, I'm not gonna judge, uh, motive of council members bringing these forward.
So we can take these one at a time if that's, uh, what the council wants to do, um, set a group and so for item number 10, um, the current item, what does the council wanna do? We just wanna, you don't have to do anything. We can just move on.
Can we table the item?
Yes. Sure.
Neither we table the item.
I mean, table the item is gonna keep it on the agenda. So, I mean, I would just recommend not doing anything. And then when the council member wants to bring it back, council member can bring it back.
Yeah. I mean, my suggestion.
It's not on the agenda, the staff's not working on it. It's gone.
I would suggest that we drop it and that if council member, all council members would like to take a look at the noise ordinance that we do so and have some discussions with staff and among ourselves about that. And if we choose to bring that back, that, that, that is what comes back.
Councilor Hall.
I, I concur with, um, council member Willsey. I'd like to look at the whole noise ordinance and revisit this.
So no action on this item? Just moving on?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 11, discussion to request feedback from individual business owners regarding temporary pedestrian only street closure for East Alley and/or portion of Canton Street. This is also to be introduced by Councilman Palermo. Um, I don't know if another councilor wants to comment, Councilor was bottom.
Yeah, we suggest to move on as well.
Okay, no action on this item? Is that cool with council? Item number, uh, 12, discussion to amend the alcohol serving permit to create a lower cost BYOB, which I'm assuming is bring your own beer option for restaurants. Is it booze or beer?
Bottle.
Bottle, okay. Um, again, to be introduced by Councilman Palermo, um, Councilor was bottom. Do you wanna comment?
Yes, it does to move on as well on my item number 12.
Okay, is that cool with council? No action? Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good one.
Thank you.